My clock says it's, what? Nine o'clock. Come over to the chair before I call the meeting together. We are. All right. Hey, stop here, man. Hear me up. Almost made me late. All right. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna now call our first meeting February 20. I'm gonna ask you if you will, put your phone on vibrate, uh, solid. And I'm gonna ask Gerald Steen to lead us in prayer and we'll slide to leave us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Father, Lord, as we come together on this Monday morning, Father, we just thank you for the blessings that you've already bestowed upon us, Lord, for being able to get up and to move around and give us our health. Father, we just thank you for your patience you have for us, Lord, as we go out today. But, Father, as we do the business of Madison County, Lord, we just ask that decisions that we make would always be good for Madison County and pleasing to you in your heart, Lord. But most of all, we just thank you for our Savior, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. A pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. The computer going blank, but it is. Uh, up is right approval of minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, you have before you the January the 18th and the 25th board minutes. I would ask if there are no changes to please approve said minutes.
All right, we have a motion by Sheila. They're second. Second by Carl. Discussion. Not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right. Jump right on down here with, uh, concerned citizen, and we got supervisor Sheila Jones.
She concerned?
Yeah, she concerned. But she trying to get her computer fired up.
What? Skip and come back, I can't see my computer.
Well, you want mine? Here, you need mine. There you go, thanks, Jones, go ahead. There you go. Mine's on.
Probably ain't been updated like mine used to. Mm-hmm. Won't act right. Miss Sheila, you up?
Oh, yeah, here I am, okay.
Soon as you get it up and going. All these buttons oughta turn it off.
Yeah, I guess, um, I guess it's time to vote acceptance of the written comments and acknowledge the written comments as represented by the board, by the clerk of the board.
All right, is that the motion to close the exception of the written comments? They're second.
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right, now we're down to do your other part, redistricting. Did you open it up, Carl?
I have no idea, probably about three weeks.
Okay, guys, I can't see it on my, uh, laptop. I don't know what plan it is.
On plan or on letters?
Well, what's up next? It says acceptance of written comments. Okay, we already, did we already do that?
You're number four now.
Number four.
What is your proposed plan?
It's plan two.
Yeah, it's, uh, proposals, uh, supervisor district plan two.
Who's this?
You got the polls here, supervisor plan two. Is there a motion or approval of this plan?
Sheila, was she making the motion or is it under your name? Are you making the motion or are you discussing it or?
Um, I'm happy to make the motion. I'm not sure I can discuss it a whole lot. It is what it is.
Okay, I just say it under your name, so.
I entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt and order restriction, redistricting, the Board of Supervisors District is set forth in the map and accompanying data in the plan design designated as Madison County Supervisor District Plan Two, February the 3rd, 2022.
All right, we got a motion by Gerald. They're second.
I second.
Second by Carl. In the discussion. It's not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, what was that vote again?
Motion carry.
What is the vote?
Uh, I got four one.
You go aye.
I need to change that to a no.
It's three to two.
Three to.
I need to change mine to a no. Yeah.
All right, motion carry at three to.
And, uh, Mr. President, with, um, with that being said, I would like to ask Mr. Tommy Cardon, um, our attorney, to come up and just go over the steps that we did take on redist, on how do we got to this map? If you would, just real quick, just kind of let the public.
I'm gonna come over. There you go.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I'll just walk you through the process that took place over the course of the last several months. Things really began, I think, on October the 4th of 2021, when, um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Steen.
I, I, good, yeah, 'cause I can't see half the board.
Um, thank you, I appreciate that. On October the 4th, 2021, uh, this board adopted a set of redistricting principles, which were the guidelines that would be followed in developing the plan. And the board also retained, uh, our law firm as counsel to you, as special counsel to you, to assist in that process. And you directed us to work with CNPDD, uh, in developing a plan for your consideration. And so we immediately began working then with CNPDD. We, uh, visited with each one of you individually and obtained your input about the characteristics of your particular district, or the district you represent currently. Uh, we went through that process and then, uh, working with CNPDD, we, uh, adhered to the principles that were set forth. And our goal was to develop, um, a composite plan based on all of the information that we had, um, had collected at that time. And so we developed a composite plan. And then when we developed that, uh, we, uh, we came before you and you set a public hearing. And you did that on December the 19th. You set a public hearing date for January the 25th. And the purpose of that public hearing was to receive public comment on the draft plan that had been developed. And that plan was actually posted on the website, um, probably 10, 12 days before January the 25th, uh, to afford members of the public an opportunity to see it, look at it, and, um, and be prepared to make any comments at the hearing. Um, on January the 25th, we held the public hearing. Here, there were, um, there were four people who signed up to make public comments. Uh, one of those, uh, yielded and submitted written comments afterwards. The other three provided the, um, the verbal comments. The comments we heard at the public hearing and almost exclusively were avoid splitting precincts. And we explained to everyone at the time that that indeed was a goal, that we were going to try to adhere to, and that we looked at developing precincts after we develop supervisor districts. Because whenever you change supervisor districts, inherently, you're gonna change some precincts. And what you do after you get the district, supervisor districts in place, you come in and then you redraw the precinct lines with the goal of trying to get as few split precincts as possible. And so, uh, that's what we heard at the public hearing. We also received some other public input, um, after the hearing, which caused us to go back and make some changes to the plan that was before you. It was a draft plan that was before you for the public hearing. And the reason you put a draft plan out is so that you can make changes if you receive input that merits those. Um, you did receive some input. We were requested to look at, uh, the possibility of making some changes based on that input, and we did. And, uh, the changes are reflected in this map. Basically, the changes that took place were the St. Catherine's and Cotton Road area in District Three was moved to District One. Um, the unincorporated area south of Gluckstadt and north of Madison that previously was in District One, uh, was moved to District Two. Then there was an area, uh, that's north of 463 and right south of Ingleside Drive that was in District Two. It was moved to District One. And then, uh, the Lake Cavalier area, which had been in District Four under the plan that was at the public hearing, was moved back into District Three, which is where it was originally. So those were the changes that were made, that are incorporated in this map that you've just approved. And, um, we, we made those changes and then we posted that map, um, I think on February the 3rd, uh, and made that available on the website, uh, and made it available to the public. So, uh, that's the process, Mr. President, members of the board, that, uh, that we've gone through in developing this and, um, this, um, this plan that you have just adopted today. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Tommy, on the precincts, um, we're gonna, we're gonna start working on those or are you gonna? I, I know the, we're gonna have to start working on the constables and the, and the judges' lines as well. What order would that come in?
Well, that's a very good point, Mr. Steen. What we will now do is that particularly CNPDD, because CNPDD's main role is actually the nomographers, they're the ones who actually draw the lines. Uh, they will be meeting with the election commissioners and the circuit clerk to go ahead and start making the precinct changes. That's one of the reasons it's good for you to adopt a plan now, because it gives us a lot more time to make the precinct changes and to notify everyone well before the next round of elections. And so that will take place, that process will start now. And simultaneously with that process, we'll also work to develop the justice court judge lines and the constable lines will come back before you with another draft there, uh, for you to consider and look at and then ultimately adopt those plans.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right.
About the precincts, I'm trying to recall in my short history of board actually doing the precincts, I thought precincts were actually set up after we set the districts up for both the chancellor, for both the, uh, board and the, uh, Justice Court judges, uh, Austin and the constables. And then the precincts were actually worked out by the election commissioners and the circuit clerk. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Banks, that is correct. That's how that will proceed. Uh, they will work that out and they will work in conjunction with CNPDD to actually, you know, draw those lines. And then that will, um, those will be the precinct, the new precinct lines.
Oh, okay, 'cause at the public hearing, you know, the circuit clerk got up and I was talking about the split precincts and kind of admonishing us about, uh, these precinct lines, and I was wondering, has she forgotten her job? But...
Well, let me just say, Mr. Banks, this is a normal process that all other counties follow in terms of, of, you know, adopting supervisor lines and then adjusting the precinct lines, uh, with the election commissioners and the clerk after that, that's done.
Yeah, well, this probably is her first redistricting situation, so she might not have known where precincts come from. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, now, this will go back on, out on our website as they assume, uh, as they approve, uh, uh, redistricting lines.
Yes, sir.
Tommy?
Yes, sir. It will be, and Mr. President, what'll happen, uh, it will go on the website, there is a requirement for publication of the order that you adopted. Um, and we've, the way we drafted, set up the order is, uh, we've, we've set it up so that the supervisor lines actually become effective January 1, 2023, for the next round of elections. But we'll have to publish the order well in advance of that, because there's a statutory requirement that you publish it for three weeks and at least 30 days before, uh, the qualifying deadline. So we've drafted the order so that you will publish this order, uh, sometime probably this summer, uh, or later in the fall, uh, once, you know, you get your precinct lines in place and that kind of thing.
All right, well, listen, thank you for your service. Great job.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
All right, moving right along, uh, Ms. Joanne Gordon, Canton Tourism, is she out there, Sheldon?
She has been called, uh, here she comes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, how y'all doing?
Right, if you will, just tell us who you are and what you're here for.
Well, I'm Ed Hutchinson, president of Canton Tourism and the Canton Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I'm, just wanted to thank you all so much, uh, last year with y'all's help, especially, uh, Mr. Griffin, you taking the time and Mr. Banks taking the time to meet with me when I was just newly appointed last year, just a week within, uh, in that position. And you all met with me concerned about the Christmas festival, and that's the reason why we're here. We just wanted to, uh, talk to y'all about that and, uh, we had a very successful Christmas festival. And you guys were very kind, the whole board was, to me when I was just coming together with a preliminary plan to hold the Christmas festival. And you guys were all very nice to me and worked, helped me through the process and all that. And, you know, I can't express the kindness that y'all have shown me. And also to the, Mr. Vance, the administrator, he was very kind to us. And, uh, anyways, I just wanted to introduce, the first thing we did as a new board and everything, we went ahead and two smart things we did. One, we brought back Joanne Gordon as a consultant. She started the whole Christmas festival, uh, years ago, back in the 80s. And we knew that we could trust her to do the job correctly. And I wanted to, since you guys put the faith in me to allow us to go forward with the Christmas festival, I wanted to bring in somebody that everybody could trust and to do a good job. And that was probably the, one of the smartest things I did along with the board. And then the second smartest thing, and I told Mr. Griffin, Mr. Banks, if they helped us along, we would do a good job and everything. Uh, the second thing was we went ahead and hired a new executive director, and I want to introduce her next, and that's Ms., and a lot of people might already know her and everything else, May McCarty, and she's done a great job. And, uh, we're looking forward to Canton Tourism to grow. And as a store owner with two stores on the square, and the community impact that the Christmas festival has each year is tremendous. And with my stores, it's about 40% of our sales, annual sales, is a tremendous impact. So I really appreciate you all so much for allowing us to do it again and looking forward to a good working relationship with y'all. Ms. May?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am May McCarty, as he said. Um, I'm from Canton originally and, uh, moved back here, um, after being gone for roughly 18 years. I left after high school, so we're happy to be home and, um, it is home. And I have wonderful memories of all of the events, like the Christmas festival, um, when I would attend as a child and growing up here. So it's just very special to me and, um, I'm just very proud to be a part of this organization now and working alongside, um, partners like y'all and, and just wanted to echo what Ed said and just thank you immensely. I know I wasn't here for, um, everything, what went into going on, uh, prior to my starting. Um, I did walk through the door just about two weeks before the festival started, so that was interesting. Um, but, and I've said this a few times before already, but just wanted to say, um, you know, coming into an environment like that with very big shoes to fill and at a, probably the busiest time of, uh, the year for us, uh, you know, it's a little overwhelming at first. Um, but day one, after seeing all of the community-wide efforts and the team that I get to work with at Tourism and how well everyone came together to make this go, uh, to make this event happen, it put any kind of nerves or, um, stress I had at ease, because it has really been a pleasure so far, um, being able to work on, uh, with a team like we have. And so I just thank y'all again for everything you did to help this, make this happen for us, and I look forward to working with you.
All right, can we come in from the board? Uh, Joanne?
I think Ms. Joanne wanted to say some things.
Come on. Come on.
Do you want to do something else?
No, I just wanted, I want to ask about that last name, McCarty.
Yeah, oh, sure.
I don't know but one McCarty around, is you have to be in a relation, related to that McCarty?
It's probably who you're thinking of.
It's probably who you're thinking of.
Probably who I'm thinking of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just leave that alone here, probably.
Daughter-in-law.
Daughter-in-law. Okay, married to the son. All right. Great to have both of you all back.
Thank you.
I'm Joanne Gordon, and I want to say thank you, uh, as well, for allowing us to come just for a few minutes today, just really from the biggest heartfelt thank you that we've ever experienced. In October, I was riding to Atlanta and got a phone call from Ed Hutchinson, who said, "Joanne, we have a problem here." And he said, "If we do not have the Christmas festival, I am down 40% this year." Well, I come from a small town of Winona, Mississippi, and Canton for 40 years, so I live small town. I'm part of the retail merchant, um, life, all of my life, my parents and grandparents were. So that kind of hit home to me, not to mention that my dad is probably, um, up in heaven going, "You better get over there and help Joanne." And so I accepted it and I came back. And one of the first meetings I had to have and did have was with Shelton Vance and Drew Redinger. And I'm going to say that those are the two greatest individuals I have had the pleasure of meeting with. They gave me the rules, the policies, the procedures. They let us know they expected us to follow it to the T. I think that we did try to do that and we were, I probably drove Drew crazy, I was on the phone with him all the time, and asking him to unlock the post in some mornings, which he did. And it just is, again, one of the nicest experiences, but I know it also came from this board. And I want to say thank you so much. Years ago, when Andy Taggart was here and I was in, one of the team members over at Canton Convention and Visitors Bureau, I made a comment to him when we first met, and I said, "You know, Andy, really, the Board of Supervisors is like the parents of a household." You have four very diverse communities that you oversee, and I know each of you have your own, uh, little spots in the world that you are elected from. But the beauty and the future of Madison County is the fact that you watch over all of us. And this Christmas festival this year was a testament to the fact that this Board of Supervisors cares about every community. And the other thing that I would say to you is that we very much appreciate everything you did for the courthouse and the courthouse grounds. We are very committed to help you preserve those grounds, and we are very appreciative of that, because Canton is your historic preservation, the whole square is a National Register Landmark District, and I am preservation conscious and crazy. So I will tell you, thank you so much again from the bottom of our heart, and we do look forward to working with you. And also thank you to the Madison County Sheriff's Department for what they did for us during the festival as well. So thank you very much for letting us come and speak today. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Well, good to see you back, Joanne, I can tell you that.
Thank you, Carl, I appreciate it. I'm glad to be back.
Great.
Been a pleasure.
Make a comment?
Yes.
Thanks for her being here, we're now at Louie's returning to Canton.
Yes, and I told them, I told them to call you. Did they call you? Okay, and I knew you would be the star of the show.
Yeah, and I just want to say that, yeah, the, the Christmas festival is one of the highlights, highlight times of Canton and the broader area, 'cause you see people, uh, from everywhere. Uh, I see some of my colleagues as supervisors from other counties even coming, uh, to Canton and, and enjoying it. And so it's a outstanding, uh, event, so we thank y'all for standing up and doing what's good for Madison County. Thank you.
We love Madison County and we love Canton, so we thank you for being such great partners.
And thank you all so much. Mr. Vance, thank you very, very much. He was a real trooper, we were in a tight crunch, and he really pulled out all the stops, he made phone calls for us. Unbelievable.
All right, all right. Great guy.
Yeah, thank you all very much, and thank you for taking the personal time to meet with me and all that.
All right, okay, bye-bye.
We get over to the ground.
It looks great, I was looking for it today. Oh, boy, it looks great. I was just thinking, that would be pretty all the time.
I agree, I agree.
We want it to be as well. And, uh, again, we've been in constant conversation with Drew, and we just spoke this past week, and, uh, tried to put everything as much as we could on the pine straw areas. We were very conscientious about that. And again, we did not enter those gates without those equipment masks down, which Mr. Vance and Drew helped us, um, find a company and work with them. And it's just, as I said, from day one, when I walked out of his office, I wanted to jump up and quick my hands.
All right.
It felt like everybody was trying to help, and that starts with y'all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Shelton, any other concerned citizen? Or do you have something to say?
No, sir, no one else has signed up, uh, either prior to the day or today.
All right. To hear them give Sheldon a good, uh, dead ago, boy, boy, that's hard. We don't have that many time. All right, moving right along, uh, consent item.
Make a motion for approval.
Got a motion by Gerald, they're second. Second by Carl, in the discussion. It's not? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Moving right along to business item. We got, uh, Paul with Allen Engineering. And Tim?
And Tim. Good morning. I just wanted to introduce Paul before he gets up here. Uh, it's Paul Lanning with Allen Engineering. Allen does our environmental, uh, compliance with DEQ. As part of the requirements, he's required to come and present that to you and then ask for your signature for, uh, the documents submitted to DEQ.
All right.
Good morning, members. I appreciate your, um, time this morning. I know you have a busy agenda and it's Monday morning, so I'll do my best to keep this very short. Like Tim said, this is a required, uh, presentation. So stormwater management has a long history of being regulated in the United States. It started in the Federal Water Pollution Control Act in 1948. Uh, that morphed in the 1970s to the Clean Water Act. In the early 1990s, the Clean Water Act was amended to include the Phase One stormwater programs. That would be your larger cities, like in the state of Mississippi, the city of Jackson is the only Phase One stormwater program. In the late 1990s, it was amended to include Phase Two stormwater program, which is your smaller entities. In the state of Mississippi, there are 40 plus or minus. Your cities and counties, and as well as Keesler Air Force Base, Southern Miss, and then MDOT is also required, uh, to manage. MDOT is also required uh to manage stormwater uh pollution. So why is all this important? So EPA manages this on the federal level. They delegate that down on the state level to uh state agencies in the state of Mississippi. That's MDEQ. So MDEQ manages this stormwater program by uh issuing a stormwater general permit. The stormwater general permit comes out roughly every five years, and the county, Madison County, has to submit a stormwater management plan. This plan is basically a checklist that the county says they'll do every year uh to reduce stormwater pollution. Last year, Notice DEQ fined two cities in our area due to deficiencies with these stormwater programs. One city was fined sixty-nine thousand dollars, the other city was fined thirty-four thousand dollars. So I thought it'd be a good opportunity to give you three specific examples of ways that we manage this program on your behalf, and as well as your county staff here. They do a great job. They do a number of of things as well. So one, we hold training uh throughout the year. We have the elected official training we're doing right now. We have inspector training that we uh train your building inspectors. You know, they're looking at counting county ordinances, making sure the buildings are up to par, but they're also looking at erosion set-up control, making sure your developments have silt fences, construction entrances, inlet protection, various things. So we train them on any new uh BMPs that are out and about. Uh there is some new technology, so every year the presentation changes a little bit. We also train your county um road staff on stormwater pollution prevention plan, good housekeeping at the road department, uh illicit discharge detection and elimination, and some other things. During those presentations, we have a PowerPoint presentation, and we also have a sign-in sheet. That way, if DEQ comes in audit you, we say, well, once every five years roughly, we print off that presentation, we print off the sign-in sheet, and we go, look, Madison County did this on this day, and this many people were trained. So it shows you did what you said you were going to do. Number two, um so the first one was training. Second one is uh dry weather screenings. So we drive around the county from time to time, looking, it normally can't have rained for about three or four days before that. We drive around the county, various spots, take some pictures, create a report, and let's submit that to Tim. The last two inspections, I've I've gone around the county, the biggest thing that I've seen is illegal dumping. So I take pictures of it, give them a Google place mark, send it to Tim, and then he gets it taken care of. And on my next inspection, I make sure that that um issue has been resolved. Uh and then the third is when somebody wants to develop in the county, they have to submit plans to planning and zoning. They also have to submit plans to Tim and the engineering department. Those guys, again, are looking to make sure everything's up to par with county ordinances and whatnot, but they're also making sure those developers have um those erosion control measures on the plans. Uh and then that way, when they go to develop it, uh they know that they're managing the stormwater. So all that to say, that's a lot of information in a very short amount of time. I submit, I created an annual report, submitted to Tim, worked with him to to get it updated, and we need to submit that to DEQ uh to stay in compliance. Uh so if you get a chance, and if he uh recommends it, I would recommend signing the annual report so I can get that submitted to DEQ, so you guys will be good for another year. Uh if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's what I have this morning.
Can we formally request that the uh report be uh approved and signed by the Board President?
I move.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carry. All right, thank you. All right, Victor Lewis with the Catholic Diocese of Jackson.
Good morning, Mr. President and board members.
All right.
My name is Vic Gray Lewis. I'm here on behalf of the Catholic Diocese of Jackson this morning. Uh St. Joseph in Gluckstadt has purchased a new home. Uh it's located on one-ten Ashbrook Boulevard. The purpose of the home will serve as erectory for the uh new pastor that will be coming to this parish in the in the future. And I'm asking for tax exemption on this property, or the diocese is asking for tax exemption on this property.
Mike, you seen this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh they qualified in all respects.
They do?
They filled out the application. Uh so far as I can tell, they provided IRS exemption. I mean, IRS uh documents properly there. Corporates, I guess, I recommend that you accept them for for tax deduction.
All right, got a motion by Sheila. That's second?
Second.
Second by Gerald. Any other discussion?
I got a question.
Go ahead, come in.
Mike, um have you checked that? Well, now Paul and I will be in conflict if we, being Catholics, vote for this.
I believe that you can.
Okay.
You're on the record, this is clear. You go to this particular church, I'll be just Catholic.
I'll just Catholic.
Nah, we don't go to that church. All right.
Pope will let you do.
Good question, Carl.
Yeah, that's the ask question.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Mr. President, I would like to say that I, and I appreciate y'all filling out the complete application. Many times, they come up and leave four or five of them blank, but perfect. I appreciate that. And I mean, we loaded it with all kinds of exhibits, so.
Y'all did, covered yourself, except for the, for these two over here that, uh I don't know, like Mike said, I hope the Pope accepts.
Well, we're praying for them.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh Anita Ray, uh Circuit Clerk, and Pat Truesdale.
I saw Pat out there.
I got Patty.
The Election Commission.
Good morning. I'm Pat Truesdale, and this is Helen Carney with the Election Commission. Uh our Circuit Clerk was involved in detained, and uh so we have put on your uh desk there a copy of the uh Homeland Security Agreement. And uh we had uh presented this a couple of weeks ago, asking you, and you did accept the grant that they were offering for twenty-five thousand dollars, and we were trying to buy the servers. The servers is kind of a loosely explained word. It's really gonna be some computers that are optiplex that are gonna be able to help us in the basement and again over in the Circuit Clerk's office. And uh we uh I've got the paperwork now, and it just needs an emotion for the Board President to sign so that we can apply and receive this money. Thank you.
Uh, motion by Sheila and a second by Trey. Discussion.
Mike, have you looked at this grant?
Uh, well, I'm just, I'm just seeing the actual document now.
Okay.
I believe that we have discussed this before.
Yes, sir.
And uh this is a grant, uh so, so.
Good deal.
And we've discussed it with uh Mr. Vance and with uh Nason, and they've looked at the paperwork, and so we're just bringing it for your approval.
Good deal.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Keisha, I purchase clerk, Keisha Jackson.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
I bring to you item number seventy-two on today's agenda, award the excavator and tractor bid for the road department. Attach our copies of the results of a recent reverse auction for a hydraulic diesel excavator and a tractor. I recommend that the Board take the following actions: acknowledge the bids received. Award the hydraulic diesel excavator to Track Plus as the lowest and best bidder. Award tractor to Stribling Equipment as the lowest and best best bidder for the um the tractor.
Got a second by Sheila, and I mean, a motion by Sheila, second by Carl on both of them, assuming.
Oh, no.
I made all the motions.
All right, on both of them?
All three.
All right, and come in. I gotta come in.
Come in.
On that hydraulic diesel excavator?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what is that, can I use?
That's supposed to be the track code to begin.
What is that brand? And where and where is the closest company?
Uh, thanks to close, it's supposed to be um twenty in Love Side Forest.
Love Side Forest? Okay. Have uh, have we ever owned one like that?
First being here.
All right. Uh, got a motion and a second?
Mr. President, I think there was three motions there.
Yes, three motions.
All of them the same or what?
Yeah, same person. Uh, the first motion was to acknowledge the uh bids received. Second motion was to award the hydraulic diesel excavator. The third motion was to award the uh Doge.
All of them was Carl and Sheila?
Correct.
Where they were running inside?
Yeah, whatever you feel like.
I just, I just want to make sure it's done right. That's the only thing. That's the only reason I'm questioning it. Not questioning, but bringing it up.
All three in one and make one of them?
All three in one is easy.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Okay.
Good job. Moving right along.
Okay, it's, the next one on the agenda is number seventy-three, acknowledge the solid waste proposals. On last Tuesday, February the first, twenty-twenty-two, proposals for recycling and solid waste collection services were open. There were three proposals for the solid waste collection and two proposals for the recycling collection. I ask that the Board take the following actions to acknowledge the proposals, and also to take the proposals under advisement until a fu- future meeting.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the proposals.
Got a motion by Gerald, that's second. Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
But where are the proposals? I, are they on the attachment?
I can call them out to you.
There's no attachment.
No, I can call them out to you.
Is that to acknowledge and take under advisement? Was that just to acknowledge?
That's just to acknowledge, because I know that we did get them in.
Yes, sir.
And the question, and it was to go ahead and take them under advisement. Why don't we just go ahead and take them under advisement, then she can give them to us so we can see them?
We can do that.
Yeah.
Y'all want to take them under advisement? Do we have time to do that?
Yeah, we're gonna do that anyway.
They've already been publicly announced when we opened, so she can tell you what they were. Uh we just still have to read through the the proposals where, I don't know, each were fifty pages or so, and we're still reading through them to make sure that there's not something in them that.
Well, let's just take it under advisement and bring it back at the next board meeting after y'all finish reading them then.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Gerald, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. All right. Uh, Tim?
Okay.
County engineer.
Good morning. Uh, first item I have for you is a request to advertise for construction, engineering, and inspection services for Reunion Three.
Motion by Sheila. Second by Trey. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Right on.
Next item is a request to advertise for curb and gutter improvements on Bridge Park Circle.
Bridge Park Circle. That's yours, Carl?
I don't know. That's yours.
That, that's mine?
That's, that's the one in Vanebridge that we discussed. That's, that's the one we discussed last week.
Okay, uh, motion by Carl, second by myself. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right, next item I have is a request to advertise for the construction of the Simpson Road Bridge Replacement Project, which is a state aid project.
Motion. Motion, uh, second by Sheila. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
All right, the next two items I have are the engineering department's requesting for the county attorney to be authorized to sign the attached right-of-way certification letters. First, for uh Mount Pilgrim Road. Uh this is a document the state aid needs in order to uh release the funds for construction.
Motion by Sheila, second by Trey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right, same exact thing. This one is the right-of-way certification for the Hindle Road Bridge.
Move. Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Next item is a request to release the CD from our two hemp hill construction that they provided for the Dewise Road drainage improvements. They did this in lieu of actually having retainage removed from the uh their bid, or from their pay apps.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Next item I have is a request by Brant Builders to reduce the size of a drainage easement in uh Ashby Ridge. Currently, the corner of the drainage easement's about five feet from the corner of the house, and they've requested to modify it in order to make it about fifteen feet from the house. It has no impact on the engineering department. We can still maintain the easement is, or the ditch that's in the easement from the other side.
Move. Motion by Carl. Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right.
What else, Tim?
Last me, or last one. Last meeting, we had uh King Ranch Road. We awarded the project. We had a problem with the bid tab. We were sixty-three dol- three, sixty-three dollars off, so I want to come back and present it to you again and request that the low bid be approved from Hemp Hill Construction for six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars even. Last time, it was six-hundred-and-fifty, sixty-three. So in order for us to have clean minutes to go before the uh MPO.
Got a motion by Carl, second by Sheila. In a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Scott?
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, this uh first item is a public hearing. Yeah, to open a public hearing.
Motion by Trey, second by Carl, to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All opposed? Motion carry.
Uh, item number eighty-two, Precash Agrewall. This is a rezoning from R-two to R-three. It's located southwest corner of Highway sixteen west and North Liberty Street, Supervisor District Five. This was denied by the Planning Commission on eleven eighteen twenty-twenty-one, and uh they filed an appeal, and they are here to speak on this case.
All right. Okay, that's what we had that up there for.
Let me see. Uh, my name is Stuart Rutledge, and I am here uh to request a rezoning of a piece of property that's just northwest of Canton, and I got a a presentation I'll walk through real quickly. Let's see. Bear with me as we get it loaded. Let's see. There it goes. It started right when I. All right, again, my name is Stuart Rutledge, and uh I grew up in Rankin County. My family's from Pickens, and uh also grew up back and forth from Canton. Um, I'm a real estate developer. I develop uh workforce housing, which is um housing designed for people who would work at uh some of the, some of the industry y'all are bringing into this town, uh might work at uh city uh and local governments. Um, and also, we have a lot of first responders, so I'm just trying to give you an idea of the, our target for whom we develop. That just jumped, jumped on its own. The Madison County and the city of Canton, as I mentioned, are important to me, although I develop all across the southeast because we grew up in this area, and we have John Granberry as our project engineer, who I believe many of y'all know. Uh, our request is that the Board rezone one parcel of property that touches the Canton City limits on the north side, and it would rezone it from R-two medium density to R-three high density, the next designation up. Our goal with this, and this is merely the first step to make it even a possibility, would be to attempt to develop high-quality, new construction workforce housing to support Madison County's and Canton's growing workforce. Uh, our funding would be a combination of a traditional bank loan coupled with federal housing tax credits that are aimed at serving this population. The location, as you can see, is northwest of Canton. And if at any time I need to slow down or pause, just let me know. So there's the site we're requesting, and obviously, it's only the portion that's in the county. Uh, this request will improve the area where it's located, and it has the support of the city, which is important. Uh, I'm gonna see if I can pause, because it's skipping ahead a lot faster than I intend. So let me pause that. So, this is the important note, and that, these are the existing conditions. Um, these are pictures taken last week, uh, from the frontage of where we're trying to rezone. As you can see, Scott Weeks has signed in the, uh, bottom right. I don't know how to make my slideshow quit skipping. But our goal is to rezone such that we can develop this into a high-quality, uh, defined and controlled residential community. And these are pictures of some of our existing work, and this is what we would build in that area. This is a letter from, uh, Les Penn, just confirming that we have, we've communicated with the city and confirmed that they are supportive of this to bring, uh, not only new housing, but also to redevelop and revitalize the area, which, as you can see, uh, needs some attention. The zone, the area, um, where we're trying to rezone is right here. And all the orange locations are areas that are currently zoned, uh, R three that we're requesting, just to give you an idea that there is a large number of comparably zoned sites in the area, so that it would fit appropriately. Just for reference, the site right here is a, uh, non-conforming use in that it was, uh, apartments before this rezoning took place. I, I don't, I do not know how to make my computer quit skipping ahead, but all the others are, uh, were consciously zoned as R three, and that's what I'm seeking. As y'all know, I'm gonna try a little harder to pause this. I have, I'm not sure why it won't pause, but it's skipping ahead too quickly. Bear with me. Well, I still see no way to do that. But as, as you know, the, in order for you, the board, to, uh, reclassify zoning, there, there has to be a mistake, or the character of the neighborhood has to have changed. And, um, the zoning regulations have to be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And statute says that changes in a plan are permissible and are to be expected, and the purpose of the plan is to bring about coordinated physical development in accordance with present and future needs of the city. Our request satisfies these requirements. It complies with your comprehensive plan. The character of the neighborhood has changed, and importantly, there is a public need for new, high-quality housing. This is a quote from your Madison County Comprehensive Plan, and it says that "The quality and occupancy of a community's housing stock are key indicators of economic growth." And here's the change in character, is that from two thousand to two thousand and ten, the number of total households increased thirty-one point six percent. Further, Madison County, as y'all know, does not own or manage any housing. As such, satisfying your housing needs is completely dependent on private developers like me. Uh, the Comprehensive Plan further only considers the two thousand and ten population, and recent estimates and two thousand and forty projections show Madison's emerging needs as stated in your Comprehensive Plan. Your Comprehensive Plan states that there will be over seventeen thousand single-family units needed. There will be almost a thousand multifamily needed and twenty-four hundred manufactured. My goal is to satisfy just a portion and just put a dent in that first component. This is a screenshot from your Comprehensive Plan, and of course, it skips by it. But as you can see, it says the objective of your, your plan is to provide a mixture of residential densities to suit different needs and tastes, and to locate higher residential developments, uh, in places where the infrastructure will support it, which, that applies here. And to provide housing to meet the needs of your citizens at an affordable cost, which is precisely what we're proposing. Uh, Madison County, it goes without saying, has experienced massive population growth. Your, uh, Comprehensive Plan lists the county population at ninety-five thousand, but the latest estimate is a hundred and seven thousand with the, with the recent census. You're the seventh most populous county in the, in the state, and you're the second fastest-growing county in the state. So Madison, as you know, has en, has enjoyed enormous job and industry growth. But with that, the need for housing and also the backlog, uh, is hugely growing in this area. Madison has had a four percent job growth over the last year, adding twenty-one hundred jobs. You have the largest labor, tri-county labor force in Mississippi. But here's a key point, and it's, it's item number three on the screen right now. And this relates to tax base, is Madison County has twenty-four thousand residents who commute into the county for work, who don't live here, who don't pay taxes, uh, and who are serving some other county but coming here to work. So there is a growing need, and it's growing every day, for high-quality, new housing in your area. These are some of the, um, organizations with whom we will work and do work, which is the, uh, workforce training and the, um, both governmental and private organizations, which are bringing in the jobs but rely on private developers to bring in the housing. In addition to the statutory requirements which we satisfy, our average total development cost, which would apply here, is about ten million dollars. That means that our project would bring about ten million dollars to Madison County. That would be new jobs, construction opportunities, and all the material purchase ranging from lumber to plumbing. Uh, in, in, in our work, we bring extremely high-quality, new communities that are tightly controlled, which serves the purpose of revitalizing an area, but also defining it for years to come. Uh, so, in conclusion, we want to go one zoning designation up to make this even possible and financially feasible for us to consider, and, uh, we request your consideration and appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. Scotty. All right, well, I guess we go to question, we'll hear from, uh. Yeah, Scott. Or Andy. And then we'll hear the, hear the other side. Is there any, any?
Uh, we do have some opposition.
Yeah, I see a lot of opposition here.
Yes. You want to speak?
Now, well, we, we can go. Let's one question. Uh, and, and when we started the public hearing, you said that, uh, this was an appeal to us because the, um, planning and zoning denied.
Planning Commission did deny it.
Good, good, okay. Um, then I'm ready to hear, uh,
Opposed.
That, 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 the people who live there.
Yeah.
And see what that.
You represent them, Ben?
Just, just one word before they do that, and I think you'll hear the opposition, and, uh, quite frankly, the opposition, uh, will likely, if they do it as they did at Planning and Zoning, set forth the reasons that, that they were opposed to that, and that's what the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted. They heard them out and did not approve it for those reasons. But, uh, Mr. Rutledge does meet all of the requirements for, in his petition for rezoning. I guess it was just, uh, an, an, an argument as to, um, who you believe. Uh, it was a close call. Uh, Mr. Mr. Rutledge presented a very thorough and detailed, uh, presentation like he has this morning. The opposition had some very good points that they made. So, that's where Planning and Zoning fell on the matter. But as far as requirements, regulations, he, he does fall within all of the, the requirements of the ordinance for his petition.
How much, since you up there, attorney? How much of this property or the property up there actually outside the city limits?
Uh, I understood him to say that all of this property is outside of the city limits, but that it, it abuts the city limits. Is that correct?
It, the parcel, there's a, I guess you'd call it a parent parcel. It's about twenty acres, uh, and probably ninety percent of it is solely in the county. But obviously, all we're requesting here today is one hundred percent in the county. We're not, this, this has nothing to do with the portion that is within the city.
Yeah, it's twenty-three acres that from, looks like from land glide and from what I've read here. And that's, and then another one point seven acres.
Yes, sir, there's one point seven that's in the city, and, uh, like we say, if, if there's any, uh, consideration with that, it would be brought before the City of Canton.
But today, the property that he's on here today is
The thing that we're looking at.
One hundred percent in the county, his portion of it that he's on here today.
All right, let's hear from the opposition. Ben, you represent them?
Well, I'm, you know I'm an attorney, but I'm not here in my role as an attorney. Uh, I'm one of the directors of the Madison County Shrine Club, which is an adjacent property owner immediately to the south. So I'm, I'm here as a, an adjacent property owner.
All right.
Um, and I, I was at the, um, zoning board meeting when, when this request was denied, and it, it wasn't close. It wasn't, it was not a close decision at all. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, one of the members of the zoning board made a motion, uh, to approve it, uh, and did not receive a second, and rather than leave it lingering on their docket, uh, one of the members moved to disapprove it. Uh, it was seconded and unanimously disapproved. So that was not a close vote in any, in any manner whatsoever. This property is located adjacent to the city limits on the south side of the property. Mr. Agrawal owns more property east and south. The photographs that Mr. Rutledge showed us showing the present condition of the property with the weeds grown up and the, and the, uh, trucks that are parked on the parking lot, that's Mr. Agrawal's property that's on Highway fifty-one, um, up in, and, and it's in a commercial corridor in the City of Canton. In order for him to gain access to his twenty-three acres, uh, of R two property, he's got to get a, a curb cut that goes right through the, uh, the commercial corridor zoning, which in Canton is a, an exclusive, uh, zoning. Um, you can't build a residence in, uh, commercial corridor. So they're gonna have to change a lot of things, including the city. Uh, this property, uh, is forested. When Mr. Rutledge tells you that there have been changes in the community, he's talking about Madison County, which is tens of thousands of acres. This community has changed since two thousand in the following regard. There, uh, on the east side of Highway fifty-one, just south of this property, there's a real pretty little single-family residential subdivision. Uh, the objectors that are here today, uh, are speaking for at least eighteen homeowners up and down Highway sixteen west. Uh, one of the objectors is a church around there. Now, let me change the subject just a little bit. We get good judgment by experiencing bad things. The homeowners that live, uh, east and north of this property, uh, have had some bad experience with Pecan Village. That's the apartment complex right around the corner, which is a non-conforming use. Uh, the, the sheriff is, is here. You know that I do defense work in, in Circuit Court. Let me tell you, any one of you could drive through that Pecan Village parking lot, hang a twenty-dollar bill out the window, and somebody would deliver drugs to your car. That's how bad it is. We don't want another high-density, uh, dwelling in that area. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself. Uh, Mrs. Levada Burks-Robins sent me, and Mr. Robbins is here, uh, he, he'd like to speak to you too. They have compiled a list of eighteen homeowners in that immediate area who object to the R three zoning. Now, with deference to Mr. Rutledge, uh, our, changing R two to R three is not an upward, uh, zoning change. That's a downward change. Uh, and the people that have property out there, I, I, I just wonder if anybody other than Mr. Rutledge is here to speak in favor of the rezoning. Uh, I don't think there are. I don't think any of the neighbors out there want this to be rezoned for another, uh, housing project, low-income, government-subsidized housing project. He mentioned the financing, uh, tax credits. That's for investors. Tax credits is where investors get the advantage. But then, when the government subsidizes the rent, in twenty years, the property's paid for, and Mr. Agrawal will simply own, uh, a piece of, uh, real estate that somebody else paid for. As an investment scheme, that's an excellent idea. That's a good way to make a lot of money, uh, at somebody else's expense. But Madison County adopted a comprehensive zoning plan years ago. There are two things about that that are important, I think, to you. One is that it's comprehensive. It applies to everybody. The second thing is, it's a plan. And Mr. Rutledge and his investors are asking you to change the plan. A lot of thought, a lot of, a lot of effort, uh, a lot of wisdom went into the adoption of that plan. Madison County already has places that are zoned for R three housing, and if an investor wants to build some, that's where he should buy his property. When Mr. Agrawal bought this property, he knew that it was zoned for R two. He knew that his use of that property was limited to R two, and it would be an insult to the plan and the history to change it at this point. We're told that the character of the neighborhood has changed, but the statistics cited are two thousand to two thousand and ten. We've had our property adjacent to this for fifty-one years. There has not been a new home constructed, uh, within, oh, four hundred feet of our property to the north, south, and west in that fifty-one years. The residential growth is east, and that's inside the city limits of Canton. What these planners and developers and investors are asking you to do is to change the plan so that it impacts the City of Canton. Now, uh, Mr. Rutledge tells us that he has the support of the City of Canton. There is no resolution from the Board of Aldermen that, uh, that approves this. He has a letter from one of the Aldermen, Les Penn, who happens to be my nephew. Um, and, and Les says that, uh, that he approves of it. The City of Canton has not take, taken any steps to approve this, and it's outside the city limits of Canton, although it is adjacent to it. With respect to Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Agrawal, we oppose, uh, I say this on behalf of twelve of our members, eleven of whom are residents and voters in Madison County, the eleven of, of, that I speak for oppose the rezoning. Thank you.
All right, thank you, uh, Ben. Uh, anybody else want, uh, opposing it, want to speak?
Ron Chambers.
Uh, I think this. Come on, man.
Yeah, Ron Chambers, that floor to speak.